And we will start with current council for tonight, February 5th. I'll turn it over to Mr. Garrett Jones.
All right, thank you, Council.
Oh, call.
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Bingle is absent.
All right, thank you, Terry. So for tonight's agenda, you can see there's a couple items that have been crossed out for, that were deferred for future meetings. We do have on the legislative agenda with the special board of budget ordinances, a request to, or request motion to amend the previous version of the ordinance, C three six four eight eight with the updated version. And this was a Cathcart, Zepone proposed amendment.
So moved.
Yeah, second. It's the encumbrance, yes.
And the amendment was just the updated numbers. That's, that's what the amendment is. I was like, there's nothing more to this than just updating the numbers.
I'd like to mention that we're going to defer. Okay, we're gonna, um, is there a motion to approve the amendments?
Already moved and seconded.
Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any noes? Any abstentions? Great. That is amended.
All right, now moving into the resolutions and finally, final reading ordinances. We do have a proposal on the resolution 2024 dash zero 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 seven.
Councilmember Zepone.
Yeah, I'll actually make a motion to defer indefinitely.
Second.
It's been moved in second to defer resolution zero 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 seven.
I'll just speak to that real quick. Yeah, the reason for this is, I think, procedurally with our new rules, it gets complicated to try to accomplish this goal of separating. So with the timing coming up of the election next week, it didn't really make sense to defer a week. So we're asking to defer indefinitely.
Any other comments? All those in favor of deferring, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Any abstentions? That is deferred indefinitely.
All right, now moving into ordinance C three six four five four. There was a request, a motion to amend the previous version with an updated amended version filed February 2nd. And this was proposed by Councilman Bingle for that amendment.
So I'll, I'll move to adopt Councilmember Bingle's proposed amendment.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve at the amendment. Is there any commentary on it?
Council President.
Yes.
I would suggest we have an oral motion to amend the amendment.
Oh, thank you.
Slightly to change the very last sentence of the ordinance to read. Solar volatilic permits shall be assessed at 20% of the valuation in SMC oh eight oh two oh three four point B above. That last sentence doesn't make sense unless you make this change. So I would suggest a motion along those lines and then we can vote on the regular amendment.
Can I have a motion to amend the amendment?
Can we just adopt that as a friendly amendment to the underlying amendment?
Mr. Wright, can we do a?
Well, you don't have your sponsor here, so it's a little awkward. So I would just suggest we vote on the amendment to the amendment and then vote on the amendment itself. So that would be technically more correct, so.
Okay. Council President, I'll defer to you.
Move to amend the amendment. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor indicate by saying.
Can, can you explain what that accomplishes? I don't think I understood what that was doing.
Yeah, the very last sentence of the amendment that's been submitted to you suggests that the solar permits get assessed at 20% of the valuations in chart A. There is no chart A in SMC. So it refers to a non-existent chart. This is just to correct it and make it clear what the 20% applies to.
Technical clarification.
It's a technical clarification.
Okay.
All right, it's been moved in second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yep, I'll again make a motion then to amend C three six four five four with Councilmember Bingle's proposed amendment. That also includes the amended version that we just passed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any noes? Any abstentions? That is amended. Thank you.
And then I would make a motion to defer a week on, on solar. Is that?
Yes.
Is that what was discussed?
We are getting there, absolutely.
Okay.
Oh, down to the next one.
On to the next one. That was a little.
That was an easy one to follow, sorry. All right, so the next one I have is the ordinance C three six four eight five. There is a couple requests, a motion to amend the previous version. So the first one was with the Zepone Dillon proposed amendment. And then we also had a Bingle proposed amendment on this one.
Yeah, I would make a motion to adopt the Zepone Dillon amendment now and then defer this another week to, just so it's the most up to date.
Yeah, second.
Do you want clarification on this two separate amendments? We're just gonna take yours at this time?
Yeah, my, my motion is just to adopt this one so that everyone knows the most current version. And the Bingle proposed amendment, we are in general agreement. There was just some language that we wanted to clarify around in-person training and mass training. So I will ask for a deferral for a week so we can clarify the Bingle amendment over the next week.
Is there a second?
Second.
We're voting on the deferral?
No, the Zepone Dillon proposed amendment.
Okay. So we're gonna vote on the amendment. It's been moved and seconded for the amendment. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? No abstentions?
And then I move to defer this for one week.
Second.
It's been moved in second to defer for one week. That takes us to February 12th. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Any abstentions? That is deferred till February 12th.
All right, well, that is all of the.
That's all changes for tonight. Moving on to the advanced agenda, Mr. Jones.
All right, well, we'll start with consent items to be briefed. Number one, this item will be briefed by Lauren Cyril.
Good afternoon, Council. This item is our beginning of the year purchase to fill the, our water department warehouse with repair parts for the season. This total value is nine hundred and, or $298,000. It, it went out to competitive bid. It is being awarded through, through four different companies. Ferguson Waterworks, Corn Main Consolidated Supply, and HD Fowler. Yes, sir.
Just clarification, why, why four different and not, not one source?
What we do is we divide it up into four sections within the, the different kinds of materials that we're buying.
Okay.
And it was awarded to the low bidder of each of those sections.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lauren.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Number two, this will be a brief by Chris Saber.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Today I'm seeking approval for the purchase of a compressed natural gas power generator from West Coast Energy Systems. This generator will provide backup power for a solid waste collections fueling station and allow for uninterrupted service in the event of a power outage. The purchase price for this generator is $171,512 plus tax. Be happy to answer your questions, yes.
So a backup to your backup? Or you've never had a backup generator before?
We've never had a backup generator. So this would allow us to fuel our vehicles in the event of a power outage. We've had a little leeway because half of our fleet has been diesel. But as we convert by 2027 to 100% CNG, then we'll be strictly dependent upon that. So this provides more contingency options.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Number three, this will be briefed by Clint Harris.
Good afternoon, Council President and Council. The Street Department is seeking approval to renew the value blanket ordered to purchase perforated tubing from Traffic Supply at costs not to exceed $90,000 for the year. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Clint. Number four, this item will be briefed by Kyle Arrington.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Item number four is a request to approve a multi-year value blanket to Safeway Incorporated for hauling biosolids to Boulder Park Beneficial Use Facility from the water reclamation facility. And it's for $250,000 per year with optional extensions for four additional years. Any questions? Thank you.
Number five and six will be both be briefed by Rick Giddings.
Good afternoon, Council. Item five is the purchase of three Mac Terra Pro chassis with Whitkey frontload refuse bodies on them. This is from Transport Equipment using a Sourcewell contract. Total cost, including tax, $1,500,862. These will replace three units, very old units that have exceeded their economic life. And then item six is a contract with Day Management doing business as Day Wireless. This is for the repair, maintenance, and on-call service for the city's radio, non-emergency radio communication network. The yearly expense is not to exceed $150,000. And it's a two-year contract with the possibility of three one-year extensions. Any questions?
Thank you, Rick. Thank you. Number, items number seven through 12 will be briefed by David Payne.
Good afternoon, Council President, Councilmembers, Mr. Jones. The first item is a value blanket renewal, two of two, with Micronics Engineering Filter, Filtration Group out of Tennessee. They provide our fabric filter bags for our emission control system. This contract runs from January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024, not to exceed $99,000, including tax and delivery.
Excuse me, can I ask you, David, how many bags are those for $99,000?
Oh, that will, that will, that will take care of a complete baghouse change-up. So there's 1,300 and each, 17? 1,700 in each baghouse and there's six baghouses.
Okay, thank you.
Had to think off the top of my head. The next one is a value blanket renewal, three of three, with Pete Lean and Sons out of Rapid City, South Dakota, for the purchase and delivery of calcium quicklime, which is also used in our emissions control system. This contract runs from March 1st, 2024 to February 28th, 2025, with an annual cost not to exceed $1,500,000. The next is a contract amendment with Brand Safeway LLC for scaffolding services in the waste energy from April 1st, 2023 through March 31st, 2024. We're at, we need to add $100,000 to that contract due to work scope changes during the outages. In the, in the, in that timeframe, our costs increased significantly. The next item is a contract renewal for Brand Safeway, replacing insulation and cladding at the waste energy plant. These costs, this facility, this is from February 1st, 2024 to January 31st, 2025, with a not-to-exceed cost of $350,000. The next one is a contract amendment with McKinstry Company LLC out of Spokane for HVA services at the waste energy facility. This contract runs from March 31st, 2023 through February 29th, 2024. We needed to add an additional $30,000 to the contract to cover unexpected repairs to the HVA system on site. Total annual cost is $80,000. The last one is a one-year contract extension with Helfrich Brothers Boiler Works out of Lawrence, Mass. For refractory insulation and blasting services at the waste energy facility through, from January 31st, through January 31st, 2025, additional cost not to exceed 1.4 and a half million. Any questions?
Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Items 13 and 14 will be briefed by Fred Ram.
Good afternoon. Wastewater Department is requesting approval to hire Blackwater Industries to install a stairway onto our warehouse facility. The cost is approximately $143,000. Any questions? The second item is requesting approval to hire McClintock and Turk to remove and replace their Serpentix conveyor system, which moves our biosolids from the presses to the trucks. The cost is approximately $1.4 million. No questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Appreciate it. Number 15, this one will be briefed by Catherine Miller.
Thank you, Council. This is an amendment to an existing agreement between Parks Department and Public Works. It's a reimbursement of lost revenue for the parking space that's next to the Post Street Bridge. We've had that under construction, the bridge, for several years and it's just gone longer than we, our original agreement had expected. So it won't exceed the $161,000 when we're, we're done, hopefully soon. Any questions?
Is the, the lost revenue, is that based on just historical numbers? Is that what that's?
Well, we actually adjusted it because of the pandemic and the change of, of work style. So it did get a little bit of adjustment.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Appreciate it. Number 16, this will be briefed by Mark Papich. And 17.
Good afternoon. Item number 16 is a resolution for two ecology low-interest loans. These are for the Marion Hay Sewer Intertie and the Nine Mile Sewer Reroute, both gravity sewer line projects. Total amount between the two of them is 9.7 million. The rate, interest rate's 2.4% in a 20-year term. Any questions on that one? Item number 17 is another funding agreement. This one's through the Public Works Board. It's for waterline replacement and street improvements on Freya between Garland and Wellesley. This has both loan and grant dollars. Loan amounts to about 2.3 million. Interest rate 1.38% for 20 years. And the grant amounts 405,000 with 0% match.
Just curious on the number 17. Is that gonna be a full rebuild of the street when it's all done? Okay.
Yep, yep. And there's also a pedestrian path that's going in there too, so.
Great.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Mark. Number 18, this will be briefed by Marlene Feist.
Good afternoon, Council President, Councilmembers. This is an amendment to our water supply agreement with Airway Heights. This will add an additional 250 gallons per minute to their main supplemental supply. As part of it, the Airway Heights will pay the city about $643,000 as a connection charge essentially related to that, that connection, that additional water. And we'll be coming forward later in the year with an update to the full water supply agreement.
Thank you, Marlene. Number 19 and 20, these will be both be briefed by Michael Sloan.
Council President, Councilmembers, good afternoon. Item 19 is a grant through Washington State for cyber security. It's the second of two grants that we applied for and were awarded. This grant has no matching requirement. It is going to be utilized by some network equipment that'll reside between us and our agency partners, the county and Shrek. Part of the grant will cover capital costs and a portion of it will cover all professional services associated with the installation and setup for it. So asking your approval. There's also an SBO to add that to our 2024 budget as well later in the process. And number 20, this is annual contract renewal for, through SHI International. LogRhythm is a company that helps us monitor and respond to any cyber threats or activity that we observe. It's a, it's an online service that we've been engaged with several years and so we're asking for a renewal. Now you'll, if you notice, this was a January 1 renewal and here it is a February. We have some challenges towards, at the end of the year for the beginning of the year. And then this one was a delayed contract review. So that's why it's late, asking your approval for that renewal as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And then moving into the legislative agenda, you can see the ordinance C three six four nine one. That was related to that consent item number 19 that Michael was just briefed us on. And then moving into emergency ordinances, ordinance C three six four eight two, related to the short-term rental. This will be briefed by Spencer if there's any other additional questions on this one. We good?
Any questions for Spencer on short-term rentals?
Do we, do we have amendments coming forward from your department or?
Yes, we expect there will be some cleanup things coming out this week. So we'll, we'll send those around.
Did you have a comment, Mr. Wright, as well? Are you good?
No, that covers it.
Okay.
Thank you, Spencer. And then the next ordinance we have is C three six four nine two, related to the wastewater and water. And this will be briefed by Marlene Feist.
Yeah, as we talked about in last week's Pice Committee meeting, this ordinance would create a new classification, a sec, an additional kind of wholesale water customer. We're calling them the continuous supplemental water service user. So generally, when we provide water to other systems, they, they supplement their own supplies for very limited times of the year or as an emergency. In the case of Airway Heights and potentially others in the future, we're going to be providing water on a more consistent basis. And so our costs are a little bit different for that class of customer on the O and M capital piece. The rest of the rates remain the same.
My, my only question is why, why an emergency?
Oh, so that we could, we had talked to Airway Heights and been working with them. So we wanted to be able to offer that rate starting January 1. So just an emergency so we could backdate it for them to begin that new rate at the beginning of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. And then moving into the resolutions and final reading ordinances, we have the resolution 2024 dash zero zero two zero. And this will be briefed by Jonathan Adams.
Good afternoon, Council. This item is for a proposed sole-source contract with Waste Management at Graham Road disposal. This is for disposal of contaminated materials that we encounter during public works projects. The amount of the contract is for $300,000. This is the closest licensed facility to dispose of this type of contaminated waste. And it will be used on an as-needed basis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. And then resolution 2024 dash zero zero two one. This item is just authorizing the funding agreements that we just were briefed on for items 16A and B as far as the, the loan payments for those two projects. And then ordinance C three six four nine zero. Michael Sloan is here too. If there's any additional questions on that resolution that's been previously briefed.
I don't think so.
Or ordinance, excuse me. And that concludes the advanced agenda for February 12th.
Can I get a motion to approve the advanced agenda for February 12th?
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any noes? At this time, we will go into exec session. I'm saying for 15 minutes, Mr. Piccolo? 10, he says 10. For the, for the purpose of potential litigation, no action will be taken.
Council President, you want to take a motion for that?
Can I take a motion to go into executive session?
To adjourn and to.
Second. Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. We'll be back in 10 minutes.